Hello, everybody. Welcome back to another Moon Colony livestream. It's great to see everybody. I see there's a lot of people here already. It's nice to see everyone. I hope you're all having a lovely week so far. I know we're a day early for our stream this week. We're on a Tuesday and a Wednesday today, but it's gonna be a good one. I've got Leonie here with us today. Hello, Leonie. How are you doing?
Hello. How are you guys? How are you, Jaden?
Oh, I'm good, thank you. I'm good, I'm good. And you're gonna be doing some water VFX for us today.
Yeah, apparently, yes.
Doesn't have to be water, I suppose. Any kind of liquid will do.
Yeah.
Yes, as Skullpell said, we are releasing our inner water benders today.
Exactly.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be great. So Leonie has kindly put together some resources for us. So if you wanted to follow along with us today, then if you look in Discord, in our Twitch text channel, there's a resource file that I've linked in our going-live message. So go in there and you'll get this Photoshop document and you'll get a few reference images as well.
Exactly.
You can follow along. I think the poses are nice and dynamic. There's a lot of options with what you could do with those. But I'll kind of let Leonie talk about them a bit more. He's the one that drew them, so.
Yeah, so when Jayden proposed the idea of we doing like water VFX, at first I thought just doing the VFX, but with the description, talking about water bending, I said, "Okay, we can do something that is more involved", thinking about how to apply that to a character or something. So I did these three quick poses just for us to have something to work with. And I think it's fun that I didn't imply what the VFX would be, which with which one of these, you can do whatever you want. So if you want something that is more flowy and peaceful or a wave or something that is pretty intense, you can do whatever you want with this. So it will be fun. So as Jaden said, you have to release your inner water bender.
Yeah.
Okay, so in terms of reference, because like in general, I prepare like half an hour before a stream. I do things really quick. I go on Pinterest and gather some random references of how people did water effects in the past. So here I have some options that are kinda cartoony and game-oriented probably in terms of VFX. This type of reference is nice. For example, this could be like the guys releasing a Hadouken power.
Yeah. Like a water jet.
This is also like very flowy, very nice. Some of these are actually from animation, like actual VFX of elements that you can find on Artstation if you search for it. Other artists, VFX artists do studies of different types of materials. It's nice sometimes. Okay, so I have something that is more realistic in terms of waves. I think this is actually a painting. This, I don't, I'm not sure because it's not super high-res. This is a painting. Yeah. I selected this one because I like the change in hue, in the colors, and also the shapes of the waves. So this is more wavy, I think. No, no, I thought this one was in the other also, but it is not. Okay, here we have some that are more realistic because water is actually transparent, it's not blue. The blue of the water is like reflections from the sky and other elements. So here you have some references that are a little more realistic if you want to do something like that. Here I have some that are really nice in terms of shape. I like, people that know my work know that I like simple shapes very much. So I will gravitate towards this for sure. But also some of these artists that did some, that are more realistic but also have interesting shapes to it. So this is what I gather like in 20 minutes, just searching for some images and putting on files for you to know. But like if you're going to do this for real, like in a studio environment, you can do a better selection of references and think about what you're actually looking for. Or maybe even understanding better how water actually works, not just getting like work from other artists and study from them. But one thing that you can see throughout these references, I see some elements that are important. First of all, shape. Shape is always the most important thing. If you do a nice silhouette, it's already like half the work done. So you have the outer shape, which is the silhouette, and also inner shapes that you can do with usually these foam or like white parts in water. Usually these have more to do with salty water from the sea or something, that you have this foam thing. But you can see that almost everyone does some kind of like white lines or things to make the direction of the flow a little bit more obvious. These create a nice effect. And also another important aspect is the transparency, which like for VFX like this, which they are like in a like a gray or black background, you don't have too much to work with in terms of transparency. But this is a thing that is very important for you to consider when you're doing a natural illustration, when you have water effects. It's think about the transparency and also the refraction of the light. When the light enters water, it kind of reflects to several directions. So these are important aspects that you should think about when you're doing this. So if you're on our Discord community, you have access to this file dump of references and also the poses. So we can start sketching. Okay?
I'll just drop a, I'll just drop a link to the Discord in the chat for those who aren't in our community. So be sure to join. Say you get reference, you can grab all of these references in this Photoshop file in there as well.
Yeah. So first thing I would do here, and probably if you're new to this type of exercise, I would recommend you to do that. Try to find an interesting shape to start working with. For example, I can do simple wavy lines, things like that, thinking about something that's passing behind the character and then in the front or something like this can be. Saying in the front. I can think about what is the flow of the movement. For example, if it's flowing backwards like this or it can be something that is going forward. Simple things like that. So I would do a bunch of these small like shape ideas just to figure out what I want to do first before committing to something. So I think this one, I will do more like a wavy thing like this. I can, I can counterbalance the way the character is placed. Or I can actually follow the the way the arms are posed a little bit better. I can think about, maybe for example, she's doing something that the water is going in front or something like that. So just experiment, try to get to some interesting results in this early stage.
I will just say that we have, as I should have predicted, we have had a wave of hydrates coming in.
Let's go.
Thank you, everybody, so much for looking after us. It's much appreciated. I hope you all drink with me. So thank you, thank you so much. I saw Alan also gave us a posture check, but I'm already sat up pretty straight, but thank you, Alan. What have we got? We've got some people saying, "This stream's perfect." There's someone in Discord, who was it, saying, "The stream's perfect" because they're working on a character that uses water. Oh, it's Crafts. They're working on a character that bends water. Nice. It'd be interesting to see a stream where Jaden learns how to draw. It, maybe, maybe. It'd be very basic. I'll just be drawing boxes for two hours.
No, if we get to 1 million subscribers, we'll have Jaden drawing review.
Yeah. Chickenman, "I was about to play some Baldur's Gate, but maybe I'm gonna study." Good idea, good idea.
Yeah, it's nice. Actually, I also think that these streams are very interesting because if you ask me how much I do study, probably I'll say I don't in general. I just, by this point in the career, I almost only do actual work. I don't take too much time for myself to study. And like if you ask me how many times I did this in the past, like water effects and not much, and VFX like this, like posing a character and do VFX, I don't do that very often. So for me, it's actually a study. And I can show you guys how I would tackle this problem. So if I have to work on some VFX for a game or something, this would be what I would think about, you know. Okay. Maybe this one, for example, he can be like projecting a wave that can be like behind him like that. Or on the front, like pushing water on the front. Like this could be interesting. I will probably have to scale down, move there, the characters to beat the effects. This one, maybe it can be something that is more peaceful maybe? Like the water is kind of flowing.
Yeah. Gives me, gives me healer vibes.
Yeah, maybe. It's not action, it's not an attack or something.
Yeah, yeah.
But it can be also like a very powerful mage.
Yeah, that's true.
Pulling up like huge waves.
Yeah. Lynch has said, "I hope this will help me. I've had a hard time drawing elements with randomized details and shapes like lightning bolts."
Oh, yeah. It's hard. It's not easy for me. I can say that. I always struggle drawing elements like fire, lightning, water, smoke, this type of things that we sometimes have to do. I'm not good at it, I would say.
So we get you on stream to do it.
Yes. But it's nice. I think for me, the streams that I do probably they are less like tutorials or something. And I don't know, at least in my head, it's an exercise for me. So it's something that I am interested in learning to get better. So we do streams, so we learn together, you know.
Yeah, that's a good way to, that's a good way to look at it, actually. It's a joint learning opportunity for you and everybody else.
Yeah.
See what else we've got. Leonie, would you advise to draw, to draw the shape or paint it with a bigger brush? Or is it just however you feel comfortable doing it? I mean, it seems like you're drawing the shape out first, at least roughly.
Yeah, I'm, I usually think more in lines, but you can do in shapes. And also one trick that is nice, you can just do a shape like this, you know, with lasso, which is very good also. If you have time, I would advise you to do three different methods. Try with lines and then try with lasso tool, which you're gonna do like a draw a shape and fill it like this. I like it. Doing that is nice. You have a nice energy if you like flow with the lasso and then close it to do something like this. Or you can do actually thinking about brushes like this, or you're like carving out a shape with the brush like this, you know?
Yeah.
This can also be very interesting.
I feel like they kind of, they all kind of provide different results as well.
Yeah, exactly. What I, in my experience, I tend to gravitate towards drawing with lines because I think I'm primarily someone that draws or that paints. It's funny because I think the best aspect of my work is the painting, not the drawing. But because the way I learned how to draw, it was always lines. Like I started with digital when I was 21 or something. So I was just drawing before that. So if I don't think about it, I will gravitate towards doing with lines. But with shapes is also nice, but with lasso is the best one for me because I can do shapes that are very appealing, I would say.
Yeah, I think, I think we've commented on your lasso abilities before.
Yeah, so it's like, and actually the lasso is kind of new for me. Like it's, I don't know, three or four years ago I started doing it.
Yeah.
I didn't use lasso before. So for me, it was a nice addition to my belt of abilities.
Were you, I don't know if you were watching when we had Alex Heath on the other day.
Yeah, I was not watching live, but I watched it later on YouTube.
Oh, yeah.
It was great, it was great.
Yeah, and he was like, "Yeah, I don't use the lasso tool. It's broken for me." So he uses the pen tool instead.
Yeah, yeah, it depends a lot on your preferences. It works for some, not for others.
Yeah.
So that's the thing, like if you see, I don't know, the way Alexandrov works is totally different from my way of working. I love the way he does stuff. I would love to be able to do things that way. But I tried and it didn't work for me, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
The way he thinks about brushes, shapes, drawing and everything is different. So you can have to, you have to at a certain point kind of accept like what is your style in a way? Like I would say that especially if you're a beginner, it's important for you to try different stuff. I tried a lot of different stuff. Actually, if you look at my portfolio, I have some older pieces that are a little bit more realistic or something. I tried a bunch of different stuff before I find the way I like to do my drawings.
Yeah.
And I think this is actually a natural thing to happen. You don't need to search for it. You just do what you like, study the artist that you like, and little by little, your art will start like being controlled and be refined to something that you actually think works for you, you know?
Yeah, I think, I wonder how much of the, how much of an artist's style just comes from their method of problem solving? Things end up looking a certain way just because of the way you're going about certain problems.
Yeah, and also what really interests you, like in terms of not just color, shapes and things like that, but also themes? What kind of theme you gravitates towards? Or even mood, you like spooky stuff or goofy stuff, you know?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, Chickenman said, "Yeah, I've been trying to make a list of three artists that I like" because you gave the advice of studying artists that we like. So yeah, I mean, if you know it's just two or three people, that's... I don't know, would you, would you say that it's better to have a smaller pool than a larger pool of artists to take from?
I said this on stream before, but what I did in the beginning, I was opening the like pages like Pinterest or at the time it was DeviantArt.
Yeah.
Opened the page and just scroll and see things that you like. And when you see something that you think that is really interesting, for example, a helmet design, a creature, or the way someone drew a face or whatever, you stop and do a sketch of that. I did that on paper. So I would fill four pages of my sketchbook every day with my observations. And then after a while, like the next year or something, I would look at my sketchbooks and copy from my copies, you know? So I would do like a second pass, sometimes merging ideas into a other thing. So when you do that, you can kind of understand what you really gravitate towards. When you see something that you think is interesting and see, "Oh, I want to draw this." Okay, so you have, you start creating amalgamation of everything that you like and say, "Oh, okay, I know that I like drawing characters and this and that type of character." And also like if it's, I don't know, futuristic or if it's medieval or whatever type of theme, you think it's nicer? You know, you start making your style more cohesive, you know?
Yeah.
For example, I like sci-fi, but I never drew anything sci-fi for myself. So I don't have to force this into myself, you know? Because if I really wanted to do it, I would do it, but I don't do it.
Yeah.
So yeah, I already know that I'm not a sci-fi artist, you know?
I was trying to, I was trying to think about what... I don't think we've, yeah, I don't think we've got you to do anything sci-fi, at least on the stream anyway.
Yeah, we could, we could try one time for a challenge or something, but it would not be my comfort zone at all.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, that wouldn't, I don't know, there wouldn't be much point, I don't think. Pulling you out of your comfort zone for no reason.
This is, it's not something that I did a lot, for example, water VFX and what I'm doing right now. But I could say that is my comfort zone because it's just shapes, colors.
Yeah.
And it's cartoony simplified, you know?
I was gonna say, what really makes, what really makes this is the foam, I think, the sea foam going, running through it.
Yeah.
It's really nice, but getting the, getting the placement right. I mean, it looks, it looks nice and you've seen, you made it look really easy. But having those sort of semi-random placements is quite difficult, I can imagine.
Yeah, and it's a trial and error thing. I had to do it a couple of times and I struggled a lot. Especially in a card game environment. I have to do something that is readable in a small size and you have to make it look that is like it's intense and interesting.
Yeah.
Sometimes can be very hard. So I struggled a lot with wave effects and water in the past. So I know what I, what were my mistakes in the past. So I'm trying to do it better this time. So I think this second line of water like this can be interesting. Secondary wave or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it gives, it gives the impression that the water's actually coming out, like going outwards, like an explosion.
Yeah, and also even for people that are not animators, in Photoshop, you can do simple animations. For example, make the, this point of the waves like go up and down and also this effect, effects on the bottom like getting more transparent and extruding like this.
Yeah.
If you do like simple stuff like this, you can really sell your ideas. So if you're trying to do a VFX artist portfolio, I would highly advise you to do like simple animations. So what is the, like the beginning point of the animation, what is the end? So this could like grow and become really big or just rotate around the character or something.
Yeah.
This is nice.
Yeah, those simple animations are like just a few frames and make a real nice impact.
Yeah.
So Hearn says, "I have so many artists that I like. I combine all the knowledge, my art." Oh, yeah, that's going back to when we were talking about studying artists that we enjoy. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would say that the way I learned and my career progressed, it was random.
Yeah.
It was not planned. I did not think about it. I was just drawing and doing whatever I wanted. And also at the same time, working with clients that have their own ideas, their own necessities. So I would just draw whatever they asked me to draw. For example, I always say that me working with card games and doing digital painting was totally random because I was only drawing comics and making like simpler drawings in terms of shading. It was like just flat drawing, shading on the drawings.
Yeah.
And then I got an opportunity to work in a game that was like more like Magic the Gathering style. And I said, "Yeah, okay, I don't draw like that, but I don't care. I'll be able to work with illustration, which is my goal." So I took it and like my career took a hard turn because I really enjoyed doing it. It was not planned, you know?
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder how many other artists say the same thing? And they're like, "Well, I just kind of fell into it."
Yeah. So I think it's important for you guys to have goals and pursue what you want. But at the same time, keep your mind open. But at the same time, keep your mind open, because things that you don't know that you like can appear and you actually enjoy it uh after you try it, you know? So at least for me, my career was flowy, like water, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It was just finding itself uh without thinking too much about it. Uh, of course, that I, I did decisions, of course, it was not just, oh, I'm, I'm just floating, right? Uh, sometimes I could choose between one and the other thing, so I can like work in a studio or be a freelancer or whatever. Uh, and of, of course, I know that I like games, I like uh stylized art, so things that give me the opportunity to do that, uh, I will, I will go for it, you know?
Yeah, I think it's, I think, as you say, it's important to have a goal, but be open, keep your mind open to other opportunities that might come along.
Yeah, we don't know what uh the world is going to be like in five years, 10 years, or whatever.
Yeah, true.
Especially, especially if you're, you are very young, for example, when I was uh thinking about university,
Hmm.
I entered university in 2006, and there was no smartphones, no YouTube. Like, there was no career for me thinking about, oh, I'm working from home to an international studio with games. This was unthinkable. Uh, I, I did not cross through my mind that I could do that, you know?
Yeah.
But like, things were evolving, I did not work with digital also, so it was uh, like, life is happening, things are changing, and you have to adapt.
Yeah, there's always something new around the corner.
Yeah, we never know what's going to happen. So we have all these AI things that can change the landscape or not, or can, I don't know, take a hard turn to something else, we never know what's going to happen.
Yeah, very true, very true. Um. Oh, we were talking, when we were talking about um your art style, like, yeah, your art style fitting sci-fi work. Flo in chat said, um, Leoni, it depends on what sci-fi you're going for, considering your style and your work, I'm pretty convinced you could rock it on a more fantasy sci-fi, like uh Wildstar, for example, and that's a throwback. Um.
Yeah, it's, it's like.
Halo or like a hard sci-fi, like Star Trek.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm not against trying different stuff in that sense, so for example, if for a job I had to do like some concepts or draw characters for sci-fi, I would say, okay, I will study and I will try my best.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, but it's not something that I gravitate towards.
Yeah, for sure.
Like, I never draw robots and, or something like that. And I would struggle, I'm, I'm sure, that would be a little bit hard, it would not be easy to just, oh, okay, draw like a giant robot right now. It will be hard, I'd have to study a lot. What? Okay, this one, thinking about it. Hmm.
It's like a.
How I want to make this work? I don't know if this is a nice idea to have, like, maybe uh parts that are separated or not in that
Hmm.
sense, so I, I will try just to, to see if it works or not.
Sure.
Also, the, the overlap is, is good when you have something that is gold uh in the front and in the back like this.
Yeah, it's a nice, nice way to show the, the flow of the, of the water, give it some, give it some depth.
Okay, let me think about this. Maybe it's like two different uh strips of water, but.
Oh, yeah.
I think one thing that is important in that stage, in this stage, is don't stress too much about it, just try it and erase it if it's not good. So don't go to details too soon, because if you need it, you can change it. Because, for example, this side of the shape is not very good. So right now, I'm, I'm actually mixing painting with uh shapes directly. I already erased my lines. I did something with lasso also. So just use whatever you think uh it works for the moment.
So I've already, I've already been told, oh, I've already had my first uh water of the day.
Water?
W- water. It's not how I sound, guys. Would you rather I said water?
Water, I don't know.
Today we will be doing a stream on water. Who I not said, I've always had clear goals for my career, but while I had goals, I had no control over reality, so.
Yeah, exactly.
A lot, a lot of hard moments happen, but at the end of the day, it's most important to enjoy the moments that you can, uh, when you can still paint, exactly.
Yeah, and also value what you get, because you never know if you're going to succeed or not, if you're going to lose it or not, you, we never know.
Yeah.
Life, life is unpredictable, so maybe we can have something that gets in the way of what's continuing drawing, so make it enjoyable as much as you can.
Yeah. Oh, we even had a little, little story from Alan as well. Uh, same for me, Leoni, I didn't know what was possible, uh, except drawing comics and caricature.
Yeah, this was the only. Exactly, like, for comics, for example, we had uh Brazilian artists working with Marvel and DC. Uh, so we knew that, oh, I ha- I know a guy that took colors for Marvel Comics or whatever, so it was just, oh, this is a possibility, I can try that. So uh this is one thing that is very important, how like our world works and uh is that uh, when you don't know what is possible, you, you, you cannot pursue that uh thing, because you, you, you don't know h- how to do it, but if you have someone that already did, it's way easier, especially if this person give lessons or whatever. So I would say that nowadays is way easier for you to find your style and what you want, because you have uh a lot of uh references to, to, to follow, you know? If I show you guys how I draw when I was 21, 20 years old, when I was like finishing college, it was very bad. And like, the kids nowadays with, I don't know, 18, 19 years old are like way better, but.
So impressive.
Because, yeah, it's, it's way easier to have references and know what is good and what is not,
Hmm.
to compare yourself. Uh, this can be tricky to balance, because it can be something that pulls you back, because you'll see how amazing other artists are, but if you can make this into a positive thing, you can really uh evolve quickly, you know?
Yeah.
Uh-oh, I, I can't start working for a lobby.
Oh, oh, oh no. Uh, Flo said, isn't it a little too easy to fall into a trap of thinking you're going for a style that might be yours, even though it's really just being influenced by something you've already seen too much?
Yeah, especially if you only work with uh one or two references.
Mm-hmm.
You start becoming a copycat of that artist that you like.
Yeah.
So I think in that sense, it's, it's good if you have a broad uh, uh, like, amount of references.
Yeah, broad spectrum.
Different stuff.
Hmm.
Yeah, I, I, I think my style is not very unique, at least for me, I think it's kind of generic in the sense, oh, this is like, oh, just cartoony stylized colorful characters that you've seen a bunch of times.
Yeah.
But uh, I actually don't care that much. I just draw whatever I, I like, and I have a job that pays my bills, and I'm okay with being I, 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 I know, I never felt that I'm, I'm a huge artist. I think myself as more of a problem solver than an artist per se, you know?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Hmm.
That's interesting, it's, it's interesting that you, you think about it that way.
Yeah, for example, I did uh the Visual Arts University.
Yeah.
Here, so it's like, we learn about history, art history. We learn about like traditional techniques, how to do uh like pottery, sculpture.
Oh, really?
Uh, yeah, yeah, everything.
That's cool, that's really cool.
How to draw, how to create a brush, like a real brush, with a fur and doing the, the paper and screens and also all of that. It's like very traditional in the sense.
Really cool.
And like my co- uh, uh, my friends uh were people that are more artists in a way that, oh, I, I don't care about the markets, I don't care about money or whatever, you know, it's like the, the artist uh type of guy. And I was never like that, I was always super logical and thinking about not making money per se, but like having my art to uh feel uh objective, it's not artsy and exploratory, you know, I never felt that way. So that's why I, I, I say that I'm not an artist in that sense, you know?
Sure. Ignacio has asked, Leoni, if you were, if you were in Avatar, what element would you control?
All of them, because I'm the Avatar.
You would be the Avatar, amazing, amazing.
No, okay, uh, because I, I thought he said, if you were the Avatar.
No, no, if you were, if you were in, if you're like in Avatar, in the world of Avatar.
Hmm, okay, okay, uh, probably air bender.
Air bender, yeah, that's pretty cool. I think, I think I'd probably wanna be water, water bending seems pretty, pretty relaxing.
Yeah, one of, one of the two for me, I think more flowy bends like water and wa- and air for sure.
Yeah. Didn't they, didn't they introduce like blood bending at, at some point? I don't know, I don't know. That would be cool, but.
Yeah, it's, it's like a evil water bending, which is super cool.
Uh, Marco said, yeah, come on, this job is more about being artisan than being an artist, that's a good thing. Yeah, that's true, I mean, yeah.
And like, uh, you, you can be both, you can have like a, a regular job, which you're just problem solving, and you can have your artistic career, which is more expressive and fluid, you do whatever you want. You can do both, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I know a bunch of artists that do both.
Yeah, it's kind of like, the, I feel like the, the, the peak of being an, a problem-solving artist are the people that do conservation, so they, they get like, they get a painting from 200 years ago that has, I don't know, that, that's lost a load of paint, so they need to go in and, and fix it, touch it all up and clean it and everything without destroying it and still preserving the original artist's vision. That to me is like the, the pinnacle of, I'm an artist, but I also like jigsaw puzzles.
Yeah, and like, I don't care about my expression.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I will do uh like the vision of others.
Hmm, yeah.
Which is cool. I think I, I, I have my style, because it's the, the style that is easier for me, but I never care too much about like, oh, I only draw like this, I don't want to draw anything else. Like, for work, I did like at several different styles and, so for me, it's okay to do that. When I was a teenager, I, I liked music and illustration, and I understood that I would be a profession, professional illustrator and not a musician, because as an illustrator, I can draw whatever the client wants, it's a profession. I'm a professional in that sense. And for music, it's hobby, because I just want to play whatever songs I want. I don't want to play a style that I don't like, you know? So it's, it's different. And also, I, I think this is a very important topic, because a lot of people say that they want to work with illustration, because they love drawing. But for some people, i- if you actually work with it, you can start hating it. You know, because it can be boring, it can be, you have types of work that are not appealing to you for some reason.
Yeah.
So it's not a, a problem if you take this as a hobby, you know? Think about that sometimes, uh, if you, if, if working with drawing is something that stress you a lot, maybe you just think it this is a hobby or and you're actually an artist and you just want to express yourself, and you can have other things that you do to make money and have the arts, like your pure vision of arts
Yeah.
maintained, you know? I don't think this is a, a problem at all, you know?
Yeah, I, I think that's something that is similar in, in any kind of job, right? Like, you could, uh, I don't know, you could really love baking, right? You can love making, making cakes for people and stuff, but then if you open up a bakery, you'll get, you'll get a client come in and say, hey, I want a 14-tier wedding cake that is rainbow colors, and you're like, oh, I really don't want to do that, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you've got, you've gotta do it, so it's, it's.
Yeah, like, you, you can, you can like cooking, but you don't want to work in a restaurant, you know?
Yeah.
It's different. So with art is the same, like, you have to think about it, you like producing art? Or you think about yourself as a problem solver in the industry and have to like do 50 sketches of something? This can be very boring for you if you don't, if you're not into it, you know?
Hmm, yeah, I think, I think as Flo said, it's, Flo said, you've gotta, you've got to get to work knowing it's a job. You know, I think, I think that's right, you just have to remind yourself sometimes that no matter what, no matter what job you do, it's gonna have boring parts to it.
Yeah, and like, we all uh artists that work in this industry, of course, we love doing it and we love when we can actually express ourselves and the, the styles that we like in the client's work, it's nice, I like, I love drawing, drawing for Hearthstone, doing streams like this, drawing these things. Uh, it's kind of a job, I would probably not do it if I was not as, as to do it, but it's fun.
Drag you in here.
I'm having fun by doing that, you know? So uh, it, this is the balance that I think everyone wants to get to.
Hmm.
Right, like, oh, it's actually a job, pay your bills and it's fun, so this is like the ultimate goal.
Yeah.
But sometimes can be not fun, I have to like deal with clients and the things that they want can be like, have a vision of some. like have a vision of something that is not what I intended and said, okay. In that that time, you have to separate yourself from the work and say, okay, I will do your vision. I cannot, I sometimes I will not agree, but okay, I will do what you want and deliver and I will not let this uh like influence me and make me feel sad or personally attacked because some artists really feel attacked when the clients have like some kind of feedback that they don't agree.
Hmm.
But in general, it's like, oh, the client is the owner of the product that you're drawing for. And they know what they need most of the times.
Yeah, most of the time.
Because your your illustration have to work in conjunction with other things, so don't worry too much. I just do it.
Yeah.
It's sad sometimes because you say, oh, I like my idea. I would like to put this in the portfolio, but now it's ruined. I don't want to put in the portfolio. Okay. Don't worry. You you have another chance to draw something else.
There's always more opportunities around the corner.
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna say something and I can't remember what it was now. That's frustrating. Um.
Actually, we are almost one hour in and I've.
We are, yeah.
And I did all three of them already.
We can always, we can always uh draw the people in the silhouettes if we need to.
Yeah, we can do it. Or I can erase this and do
Do some more. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, for those of you who uh might not have been here at the start, then on our Discord, we have a text channel that's called Twitch. And if you look in there, I've linked the uh I've linked to a Google Drive that has all of the resources for today in there, including this Photoshop document, which has the silhouettes on there. Would you call them silhouettes or outlines? I don't.
Yeah, it can be silhouettes.
Yeah.
Um poses.
Yeah, the poses on there. Um it's got some reference boards on there as well. So you can follow along if you like or save them for later, but whatever you do, make sure to share them with us in our Discord. We have a study room. We'd we'd love to see you guys after after these streams. I love going in there and seeing what you've all come up with.
Yeah. Yeah, and sometimes people like destroy us and do something way cooler.
Yeah. They don't, they don't have the pressure. That's why they don't have the pressure.
Chill out, guys. Come on, make it easy. What the hell? Taking this too serious.
Uh Marco said, if you think about it, a lot of stuff that we call art in origin were produced as artisan jobs. And the creators themselves had really few free choices on the on the making. Exactly.
Yeah, true.
You look at all of the, all of those portraits, those famous portraits, like, you know, I don't, I don't know what the the history of the I don't know what the history of the Mona Lisa is, but we we was that um.
Yeah, it's like most of arts that was produced in the past is commissions. Someone is paying the artist to do it.
Yeah.
True.
Um. Oh, Perongan, the uh the PSD from Alex Heath's stream is already out. Uh I I leave, let me just double check that I did upload it in there. Uh I believe I put it in the news section. Yes, if you go onto Discord in the news channel, uh I've I've put the Photoshop file in there. There's a a link to the the Google Drive. I put it in an announcement for everybody, but you might have missed it. That's okay.
No, that's not okay.
It's not okay.
You have to pay attention to our Discord 24/7.
In that same announcement, actually, it's worth me mentioning again um that we have put out our community feedback form. So it's a series of questions about our Twitch streams and about the Discord server and essentially what what you guys think of the both of them and any feedback that you might have. Uh if you guys wouldn't mind filling that out, that would be great. It'll only take a couple of minutes. And a lot of the questions are optional anyway, so you can only fill out what's relevant to you. Um if you do.
You can rate if you like the Jaden's beard or not.
Yeah, yeah, I should have had that as a question. Yeah, should have been like, should Jaden shave his beard? Yes or no?
Or one to 10, what is the rating for?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Um but I'll put a la- I'll put a link in the chat to the to the feedback form. Uh it would help us a lot if you filled it in. It can really impact the content that we make going forward and any changes that we might make to the community as well. And as a as a little bonus, if you get to the end and you give us your Discord name, then you'll be put in for a prize draw of uh of two months of Discord Nitro. So there's a little bit of a, a little bit of an incentive for you for you, but you don't have to do that. It can also be totally anonymous. Um so thank you very much. The the deadline for that is the 7th of January, so you've still got a while. Uh I'll remind, I'll remind everyone that it's a thing periodically. Do they ask about the community manager? Because that guy is amazing, deserves 10 out of 10. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Who is this guy?
I don't know. I'll pass, I'll pass on the information. It was Ignacio that said that, actually. If you, if you want the hydrate button to be only 200 bits, the form is the way. Yeah, yeah. If you, if you want the, if you want the hydrate button to go down in price, put it in the feedback form. Um.
Yeah.
Along with other, more helpful information would be great. But thank you, uh Fuwan Art for redeeming another hydrate. Thank you very much. You already sent your feedback. Well, then you don't have to worry about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you submit another one? Um I don't think you can. I think it's limited to one per person.
You can create a fake account.
No, no.
No, don't do it.
Don't do it. Don't do it.
This one, I thought about, oh, he's just getting a shower or something and like the water.
Yeah, he's just, he's just getting rained on. Or it's just like a waterfall is just like falling on his head.
Yeah. Okay. It can be like a bergamot z.
Yeah, yeah. Super sane. Water, a hydro sane.
Hydrates, super sane. I don't know.
Uh Jaden, tell us about you dressing a Santa for Christmas. That's why you're leaving the beard. I'm not dressing, well, I could dress a Santa for Christmas, but that that is not.
The less stream, less stream in the year, you have to be dressed as Santa.
Yeah, I just get, I'll just put some like talcum powder in my beard to make it look really gray. And I'll get a Santa hat. Maybe, maybe. I'll see what, I'll see what the, see what the boss says.
Ask the community manager what he thinks about.
Yeah, yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask the community manager. Uh you will look like Jaden in retirement more than Santa. Yeah, probably. Yeah, probably. I'll do my old man voice throughout the whole stream.
No, don't do this.
Welcome to the Moon Colony livestream, everybody.
I'm Jaden, your host.
I'm your host, Jaden. This is my last stream before retirement.
Okay. Hmm. This one, I'm thinking about maybe having some kind of whirl around it.
Yeah.
Kind of circular.
Like a shield kind of thing.
Yeah, maybe.
Oh, I think Melissa just, I think Melissa gave us a bit of a backstory on the Mona Lisa earlier. Is the wife of someone, is the wife of someone rich, maybe a merchant, and it was an ordered portrait that was never delivered, left to his apprentice? Ah. Sting. But man, imagine if they could, imagine if they could see it now. I bet they'd wish they got that delivered. Sell that for a fortune.
Sell to someone and say, oh, this will work.
This will be worth a lot of money.
A lot in a thousand years.
Thousand years.
Like 500 years or whatever.
How do you know? Just trust me, just trust me.
Would be a nice investment if you buy this.
Okay.
Okay. Whatever. We already have the first four ones, which are like three ones that I think are successful. So at these ones, I can lay around see what we can do with.
Yeah.
Don't worry about a thing.
I like, I like the ones where they look like they're just like hurling water forwards. I don't know why. The poses are just always really cool.
You mean this one that I'm working right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like uh conducting the water forests like this. Go.
Yeah, yeah. It 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 just kind of feels like a like a whip.
Yeah, maybe.
Uh hey, guys, I'd like to know, does Leonie do mentorships? Leonie does not do mentorships.
No, not at the moment. Maybe in the future, when else.
But um but we do have some mentorships coming up in the future for Lunar Academy, which is our mentorship program.
Yeah, if you want Leonie mentorship, uh you have to bother Jaden. Yeah. Message J. Jaden is making all the decisions.
Um but we we did our stylized mentorship earlier this year and that went very well. But if you'd like to be kept in the loop for any future mentorships coming up uh in the future, we do have a mailing list. So I'll I'll put a link, I'll put a link to that in chat, so feel free to to sign up to that and be one of the first people to find out when those mentorships are coming back.
I did mentorships in the past. And it was nice. Uh I had to stop. It was too much work. Trying to do several things at the same time. Said, no, I have to stop. Some people do annoy me with that, say, hey, when are you going to come back with mentorships? Uh maybe sometime in the future. You don't know.
Yeah, I suppose it can be quite hard, especially, especially if you're working full time to find the find the time and and the energy to do them.
Yeah, and like I don't want to do something that is boring or bland. I want to do something that is good and I really want to help. I I I feel responsible when I see that the person is not progressing and say, oh, I'm a terrible teacher. I cannot make this person better or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think you've got to remember that it's not, it's not all down to you. You know, you can only.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's hard. Like I want people to succeed. I want them to get re- really good and be give, become better than me. But sometimes, I don't know, uh it's, this is something that is interesting about uh learning and things like that. That sometimes people get things really quickly and they progress like lightning fast. And some other people take their time and they are very slow learners. And and also have a lot to do with how much exercise people will actually do. Sometimes people will just show up in the next meeting, say, oh, I ne- I I drew nothing in a week or something. Said, yeah, okay, but I already told you everything that I know. There is nothing else I can help you.
What am I supposed to teach you now? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I used to be, I used to do that. I had um oh, this was, this was right at the start of high school. Um I I started learning saxophone. And I'd go to my lessons and my teacher would be like, so how much have you practiced? And I'd be like, um like, like, yeah, yeah, like uh like two, two hours maybe, like in a week? And I'm like, yeah. I like barely at all. And he'd be like, well, I don't really have much, I don't really have much to teach you then.
Exactly. Like you have to do the first step before you go to the second step.
Yeah. But since, since learning more things on my own, I've I've found that I've really had to plan my time out a bit more, you know? Put some time in the, in the calendar, go, okay. I'll spend three, four hours a week every evening.
For me, one thing that works is that I have to uh make studying fun somehow.
Yeah.
So I'm not good at doing repetitive tasks, like um learning an instrument, doing scales or whatever. I I must do it. I would try to learn a song that I have to learn a technique to play that song, so I will do that. For example, I want to draw in illustration when I have a character that water bends. So I would do the study thinking about the application, you know?
Mm hmm.
When you have to think about, oh, I'll do studies like just because, just because I need to study. Yeah, sometimes can be hard to maintain yourself, like in a positive uh mindset, you know? Can be boring. So try to make studying fun and interesting. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's no point doing it if you find it boring, right? So that's, that's something that I I struggle with as well. At the minute, I'm learning to play uh to play bass and like, as you said, like learning the scales is just a matter of repeating them over and over and over and over and over again and.
Yeah.
They're not difficult, but it's not exactly a fun thing to to learn.
Yeah, and it's also very difficult not to be. Yeah, and it's also very difficult not to be, uh, anxious, so you have, it's, we want to do fast, but you have to take our time, be very slow and do one note at a time, this is the same thing with drawing. So, uh, I see a bunch of people that are beginners and they want to draw complex scene with ten characters fighting a dragon or whatever. Okay, this is too much. Chill out, do just like a face of a character, a hand or a feet or a whatever. Uh, and go slow, do one study at a time. I think it's nice if you have the, the will to do complex scenes and things like that, it's cool. You can try sometimes, but, uh, if you only try to do complex stuff, I think it's a recipe for failure, you know? And you feel bad about your skills. Yeah, but you're trying, you're trying things that are really difficult.
Yeah. The thing is, you're more likely to stick, I think you're more likely to stick with, with whatever hobby it is, whether it's drawing or, or, or an instrument or whatever, you're more likely to stick with it if you do take it slow, because you're not gonna get as frustrated as if you jumped in at the deep, at the deep end.
Yeah, and also, uh,
Try and draw a masterpiece.
This thing about, I, I have to draw like eight hours per day or whatever. Yeah, you, you can do that for a week, but then, uh, you'll be burnt.
Burnt out, yeah.
You'll be burnt out and you're, you, you cannot do it for a long period of time. It's important to have consistency and even if you have just one hour, for example, to practice, if you do it consistently, it's better than doing like eight hours per day in a week and then six months without doing anything.
Yeah.
Which happens a lot. Uh, and the thing is, uh, this happens, uh, with me with music, for example, I have a folder with music ideas. And I, I, when I know, see the dates, it's like, it's, I don't know, July 2022, I have ten ideas and then for six months I have nothing, you know? Because sometimes you're in the mood of thinking about that, sometimes you're not.
Yeah. I mean, it even goes to show when, a way to show it is, is when you've been playing a game, if you play a game for like two weeks and then you get burnt out from it, you then take a break for, I mean, even, even if you take a break for a month, you come back to it and you're like, I have no idea what I'm doing and I don't remember how this game works at all. Yeah. The same thing with drawing, I suppose, where you just, you lose all of that, that knowledge that you had.
Yes, uh, you, you maintain some, so like the muscle memory and some of your, of your understanding, actually, like taking a break sometimes can be good in the sense of you develop your visual library and your skills as an artist. Like in your mind also, not just drawing, because when you're practicing, you're developing your hand, your coordination and also your mind, of course. But I, I think even if I stop drawing for a while and I consume references and think about art a lot, I'm still learning something. Even it's less, of course, you learn way more if you actually put into practice. But you can act, uh, actually practice without the, the, the pen, you know?
Pen, yeah.
For example, one thing that I think most artists do is when you're having a conversation, you're looking at the other person's face and thinking about the proportions and how the lights affects the
Yeah.
The shapes of the face or whatever.
Oh, man. I don't think, I don't think I ever want to hear an artist in a monologue while they're looking at my face. It sounds, it's disturbing, yeah.
Yeah, can be sometimes.
Melissa's just put in the chat, like a psycho, you stare into their pores, thinking how you didn't see by now that, um, there's a texture, material there.
Yeah. I do that a lot because I, I tend to, like my mind tends to go away to somewhere else. So sometimes someone is talking to me and I'm just looking at the hue variation in the skin or whatever.
Yeah. Man, I wish, I wish my brain went somewhere. Sometimes I'll be talking to someone and my brain will just walk off. It won't, it won't give me any information, it will just walk off and then I'll come back into the room at like ten seconds later and have no idea what's happened.
Yeah, one thing that happens to me sometimes is that my mind goes to somewhere else and I completely lost track of time. I don't know if it's like ten seconds or one minute that I was not paying attention and I was like, oh no. What did I do? I was not paying attention.
Or when you can tell that they've just asked you a question and you have no idea what they've said and you're just like, um, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Flo said, okay, so you're having a, if you're having a conversation with Leoni, he's not listening, he's studying your face. Yes.
Yes, probably. So when I was in the UK and I was watching everyone in the studio, so how Jayden's posture can be so straight, this, this is like the straightest posture I ever seen.
I don't know, man.
The way he, he walks like a, like a robot or something.
Yeah. I swear it's not that straight, no, no, normally. I think, I think it was, subconsciously, I was trying to make myself loo- look, look better than I do, I'd swear my posture normally isn't that good. It's a weird day when you have to defend your bad posture. Uh, of course, this never happens in the Lunar Lounge, we all pay attention all the time. Oh yeah, for sure, no one, nobody ever zones out in the, in the Discord voice chat, never.
Yeah.
Especially, especially not me.
Yeah, it's not like I'm watching a YouTube video at the same time someone is talking to me or whatever.
Yeah. Some days, some days I'll have music playing. I'll have, I'll be talking to people in the Discord and then I'll also have like a YouTube video on in the background as well, wha- while I'm doing stuff. My brain just needs all of the input.
Yeah, this, this can actually be a pretty huge problem, right?
Yeah.
We are training our brains to be constantly
Yeah.
Uh, be bombarded by information all the time. Sometimes I, I try to keep it quiet, so I turn everything off and I just focus a little bit. And it's weird because I'm always watching something, listening to something. It's hard.
Yeah, I've, I've been thinking, something that, um, Matt Oslund said, uh, quite a while ago, when we had him on the stream, he, he said that sometimes he'll just sit there and he, he won't listen to anything, he won't watch anything, he'll just sit there, just stare at a wall, just to, just to relax his brain. And I, I was
I think it's good.
Been thinking recently about doing that, just turning, turning my brain off and just like watching paint dry essentially, just doing literally nothing.
Yeah. I think it's, it's, it's good at least, I don't know, five to ten minutes a day.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I will be just, uh, staring at nothing, uh, turn off every, uh, impulse, everything.
Yeah.
Just try to focus on the moment, you know? Take a ti- take your time, relax a little bit.
Yeah. Uh, it's called meditation and it's good, yeah, well, yeah, I suppose, yeah, it is meditation, isn't it? That's, that's true. In my head, I have a, i- in my head, meditation is when you have the person who's like, now close your eyes and imagine you're on a faraway island. I'm like, no, okay, I'm not doing that.
Yeah, it's like, I think meditation would be considered if you follow a technique or something. Or you have, uh, you control your breath and you control your mind to be in a certain state or whatever. But even if you don't do that, just turn off the stimulus, you know?
Yeah.
I think this is good.
Yeah.
But meditation can be interesting, I think, I don't know. Never tried.
I've tried to do guided meditation before and it never, it never works out well for me. It just makes me, um, just makes me laugh a lot of the time. Cause it's always just, I don't know, I always just find it so awkward. You know, it's like, imagine you're on a beach and the sand between your toes and the waves crashing against the, the shore and I'm like, ah.
And you'll raise your hand, say, uh, excuse me, uh, the nearest beach is a thousand kilometers away, I don't know how it feels.
I've never seen the ocean, can you explain it in more detail, please? Eat a meditation, you can't tell me what to do. Yeah, I'm gonna be like Lynch, I said, I'm just gonna be like a cat, just sat there staring at a wall, that's gonna be, that's gonna be me. What was like, what is it that they call it? A dunce corner where like, you're just sat in the, you're sat in the corner staring at the, the wall, cause you did something bad in class or something.
So this is, is actually a nice exercise, right?
Yeah.
For now, it, uh, six options.
Yeah.
Would be this, this. Different ideas for the same pose.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've got, um, thirty-five minutes left, I don't know if, what you want to do.
We can keep talking and I'll keep drawing, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, we can always, we can always cut it down a little bit earlier if we need to.
Yep. I want to know if someone is drawing with us and if you've got something interesting already.
Yeah, let me
Share with us.
Oh, Crafts has put some in the Discord, those are really cool.
Nice.
But yeah, if anyone else is, uh, following along with us, then share it in our study room on Discord. I'd love to see what you've got so far.
Yeah.
Even if they're, even if they're not finished yet, it'd be cool.
Yeah, I can put on sketches and whip also.
Yeah, you can put it in sketches and whip, yeah. Dash said, I like those guided meditations that tell you to focus on your breathing or certain parts of your body. Um, those imagine you're on a beach ones are so silly to me. Yeah, I think it, it, it depends what you're into, right? Like, I, I remember when, when I was at university, I, I had some insomnia and something that helped me was, um, there's that Headspace app, which is nice. But they had a really nice short story in there about this antique shop. And it was just about walking into the antique shop and all of the items that were on the shelf and it would, it would go into detail about what each of these items looked like and the smell of the shop and everything. That was really relaxing, I don't know if it was quite, I don't know if I'd say it was like meditation, but it helped a little bit with my, uh, like sending me to sleep. So I can see why other people would, would like to listen to that and meditate to that for sure.
Yep.
Uh, Casey Purungan said, I just listened to brown noise? Which one's brown noise? I know white noise is just like the static. His.
Yeah, if you put like rain sounds, things like that can be relaxing.
When I was a kid, when I was a kid, uh, probably about, uh, between the ages of five and ten, um, I had this machine that you'd push a button and it would play, there was like a thunderstorm, there was the seaside and you could hear like all the seagulls and everything. Um,
Yeah.
What else was there? I don't know, those are the only two that I ever used, but there was like four or five different buttons on there that all had different sound, like soundscapes. And it was really nice. And then I moved on to audiobooks. Uh, you know, as you said, I use a secondhand app that imitates Headspace. Like, I got robbed and stabbed, okay, well. In your trip, in your story, you got robbed and stabbed, very good. Brown noise is just the same, it's white noise, but low frequency, oh, okay. I think that would give me anxiety, hearing all that static, don't know if I could do that.
Okay, so what I'm doing right now, I'm applying more of transparency. So looks more like water realistically. It's stylized yet, uh, uh, still, but a little bit less because there is a little bit of transparency into it.
Yeah, it looks nice with some transparency.
Especially this one, I think this will look cool like this, you know, uh,
Yeah.
Transparency.
Uh, Dash said, I'm surprised we're not spamming hydrates today.
Yeah, come on, I was prepared for more hydrate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not even halfway through my bottle yet. Uh,
So I'm actually hydrating right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Dash did redeem our hydrates, I think, oh, here we go, we got a couple more.
Let's go, guys.
Four more, five more. There's ever a stream to do it, this is the stream.
Or maybe if we're drawing like a desert scene or a volcan- volcano scene, make more sense because we need more water.
We need more water, yeah. Um, Have we caught up? Yes, we have, oh, right, yeah. Two, two more coming through. Um.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, it's just like being on an airplane, I don't know, man, I don't know, um. Wow, you go straight in with the eraser and the mask, you're just erasing to create transparency?
Yeah.
Impressed.
Yeah, it's like, I'm erasing, because this is just for fun, this is a study, it's not actual work or anything. If I would do this for work, I would probably create a mask. Hmm, because it's, this is just quick drawings, if I don't like the way I did the transparency, I can put color back on pretty quickly, just do that and do that, okay? It's not as transparent anymore. Uh, you can see that I didn't use any fancy brushes or anything. But you can use, I don't know, like brushes that give you more things like that can be interesting, right? things like that can be interesting, right?
Yeah, a little bit of spray.
Spray splashes.
You're a water bender, but you're a messy one, just throwing it everywhere. Actually, we got, we got asked earlier what elements we would control, but what elements we'd chat control? In, if you were in Avatar, if you were in the Avatar universe, not the James Cameron one. What, what would you control? I think I saw earlier Alan said that he would, he would use fire so that he could make a bonfire easier. And it would be nice and warm and he could cook his food on it.
Yeah, actually, fire maybe is the only one that, I don't know, I, I, in the show, if someone can create fire or they just bend fire that already exists, I don't remember.
I then thought that exact same thing. I remember, I seem to remember them creating fire, like when they do their martial arts and stuff.
Yeah, 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 they do, yeah.
Yeah, but they're the only one, they're the only ones that can just make their element.
But to be fair, you can bend air everywhere in earth.
Well, yeah, that's true, so.
It, so this is easier. I think air is the, the most, uh, useful one. And that's also, uh, the earth one would be like, you always have earth to bend, probably.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah, the earth one, the earth one would be really cool. The thing that I don't like about, about air is that it's, I don't know, it, it's invisible.
Weak, probably.
Yeah, that too.
But I would not, I would, uh, when I, when you asked me, oh, what would be your element? I would say, I said air because of the personality, not because of the use.
Yeah, I didn't even think about the, I didn't even think personality wise.
I think I would be our water or air bender.
Hmm. Aronkin said war. War.
War.
War. Um. Alan said, also I could do a barbecue. Um, Dash said air probably. I'd love to just fly around. Skullpals had air, so I could just escape my responsibilities. Um, winds to fly and move like a fairy, very wholesome of that. Ozan said I'd be an airbender. No, it's not weak. No, didn't you watch How, How Tens In Fights? I don't know. I only got through half of the first season of Avatar, I think.
Yeah, I, I watched Avatar, but it was a long time ago.
The galaxy far, far away.
The details.
Yeah. I can't remember if I finished the first season or if I just got like halfway through it, but.
Yeah, I, I think I watched it kind of, uh, out of order, you know?
Oh, yeah.
It was airing on TV, so I watched one episode and then one week later I watched another one.
It, when, when I was a kid, it was awful because it was airing on TV, but they only ever showed like the same three episodes over and over and over and over and over again. So I, I could just remember three random episodes. And it was, uh, and I think that's what, that's what put me off it for a long time because I was just so sick of watching the same three episodes.
Yeah.
Uh, no, I have been told that I need to, I need to finish, I need to watch it, but it's not, it's not top of my list right now.
Yeah, I think my younger brother was more into Avatar than me. Like, I always liked it. I know I should. I think he actually followed through, uh, every episode.
Yeah. Oh, Alan said that he was the same as me, but with Dragon Ball. They just kept showing the same episodes of Dragon Ball.
Yeah, or, uh, Knights of the Zodiac, Cavaliere dos Zodíaco. When we were kids, uh, they had, yeah, because like the, the TV channel, they buy some episodes. They, they only have like ten episodes, so they go through them like every time. And I, I was, every time I was getting to the episode that I know that was the final one, saying, okay, tomorrow we have a new episode, please.
Start again.
No. I need to know how the story ends. Come on.
When I was at university, I started watching Dragon Ball, the original series, not, not Dragon Ball Z. And, um, I got through most of it and I was like, that was pretty good. I enjoyed that a lot. And then I got to Dragon Ball Z and there was like four episodes of Goku running along a, just a, just a road. He was just running along a road in the middle of nowhere and I was like, yeah, I think I'm good. I think I don't, I, I, I'm not. I don't care enough to finish watching this.
You know what's, uh, one thing that is very funny is that when I was a teenager, in my home, we had a, like a, a videotape machine or something that could record. And one of my friends knew that and he said, oh, I have like a cousin or whatever that wants to watch the Dragon Ball Z. Can you record for him? I said, yeah. So it, every time, like by the end of the day, uh, a dude that was an adult that come with a motorcycle, uh, comes in front of my house and they leave me something and I deliver something for this guy. And my parents were like, what the hell is this? What is this dude? I, and I said, I don't know this guy. They're like, it's a random dude, but I was recording the episodes for him.
That's funny. Uh, Ozan said, it's the same here. Sometimes it was going backwards. They're streaming previous episodes over and over. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's tough.
One.
What was funny as well was, I don't know, yeah, what were you gonna say?
No, I think I'm done with this.
Yeah.
It's okay. Good enough. I, I think I preferred the, the second one for this guy. This is like a little too graphical, probably.
Yeah.
A little bit of the flowy water thing.
I was gonna say, yeah, a bit of a flow.
Yeah, this one, I, I like, uh, my idea was to draw something that's more aggressive, like spikes or something.
Mm-hmm.
But could be better maybe with ice.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's okay. It's like a sketch. This one flows a little bit better. I like this one. Uh, it's kind of chaotic. You don't know where the, the water is flowing. If it's like going from the middle to the back or something like that.
Yeah.
But I, I like the, the complexity of it. This one is nice also. And I like the, the bottom one. It's two, uh, versions of the same thing, I, I would say.
Hmm.
This one is more like flowing around and the other one would be more like a attack, probably.
I was gonna say, the first one looks more like a party trick, whereas the second one looks more like it's an attack or or something.
Yeah.
Nah, that's cool.
Party trick. Imagine you're like this.
Yeah. Cool. Well, yeah, I mean, if you're done, we can, we can always call it there. End it a little bit earlier.
Does anyone have any questions, like last things that you want to ask?
Yeah, any last minute questions or anything?
This is your time.
I, I've been mastering this elemental art for decades, Jaden. Nice party trick.
Yeah.
That is, that is very much something that I would do. That's the thing.
Okay, let me organize this file. When I do this, this. Mastery of the elements.
Mastery, party tricks.
Whoop. No.
He's forgotten how to use Photoshop.
Yeah, I'm just clicking random stuff. Okay, I can show you how I organize a file. Look at it.
The trick is.
I, I just converted this to smart objects, so I can make them smaller. And if I want, I can make them bigger again, so. Just to make it more, uh, organized.
Yeah.
And this is like transparent background, right?
Yep.
Convert to smart object.
So smart, when you make it a smart object, that just means that you can resize it without losing any of the quality?
Exactly. It's like, it's, it's creating like a file inside a file, so if I open this, it's like a separate thing.
Cool.
So I can resize, do whatever I want with this. And if I si- resize it back, maintains all the characteristics.
Okay, so it's kind of like you're making it almost like a vector image, right?
Yeah, it's like a file inside the file.
A file, yeah.
And one thing that is, it's nice, for example, I have this, imagine this is something that I want to be repeated a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I like, I already did that, but because it's a smart object, I, I can open this and make a change here.
Make a change in that one.
Want to be, and I save it, it will be applied here, you know?
Okay, cool.
So it's good if you have something that you need a lot of repetition.
Mm-hmm.
For example, uh, sometimes, uh, uh, one time I had to do a candy jar.
Yeah.
With different types of candy, so I, I drew one of each, like four or five, and I created like a hundred smart objects. So I opened the candy number one, rendered that, save, and like it's already.
Them are done. Oh, that's nice.
All of them are rendered, you know?
Yeah.
You can do the stuff like that with smart objects.
Yeah.
But, uh, if you do it, uh, you're creating a file inside the file, so your files start to get, get big.
Yeah.
So you have to be mindful about that.
Mm-hmm. Um, we actually have a question from Alan. Um, he says, after this, after this sketching step, how do you control it to not overpaint it?
Uh, by being lazy.
Yeah.
Uh, like, usually I, I stop when I think already conveys the idea. So if I, if I can't stop right now, I will, I will. I don't want to overdo it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all about having an interesting shape, a nice read, uh, value wise, in terms of colors and things like that. And if it's working, like, I would not render this a lot. Uh, like, of course, if this is, was an illustration, uh, I would polish this a little bit, the edges and some of the inner details, but not a lot.
Yeah.
I would not put like a million bubbles or whatever.
Yeah, especially for a study, like once you, once you know you can convey, once you know you can get the shapes and convey the, the idea.
But I, I, I know what Alan means because I know that, uh, he struggles with controlling how much render he puts, how much time he puts into stuff.
Yeah.
So I know what's the, the concern.
Yeah.
Uh, but for me, it's just, I don't know how I do it. I just stop at the moment. I, I think it's readable enough. It's good enough. Doesn't need more. I say, okay, stop, go to the next one.
Yeah.
Don't need to overdo it.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Casey Prongen says, I have a question about how, how would you go about doing refraction in the water when lighting and environments are present?
Oh, this is a tricky one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a tough one.
Yeah, I, it's like, uh, you can be very scientific about it and actually study and think about what, uh, the light rays do when they interact with water, if they like bend upwards or downwards or whatever. But, uh, because especially when we're doing illustrations, we are just trying to convey an idea. We will reflect what is behind in a way that looks good in the illustration. Doesn't matter if it's correct or not. So you can just like displace a little bit the part of the body of the character, for example, that is behind water and maybe warp it a little bit. But I don't know, it would be a case by case thing, probably.
Yeah, I think you see a lot of people who just do like a little, a little wobble of what's through the, um, when you're looking through the water, things just a little bit.
Yeah, it's like a, yeah, just wobble a little bit, probably will be good enough. Of course, also depends on how much water you have in front of your subject or your envi- environment. I don't know, it's like case by case thing.
Yeah.
It's hard to answer.
Um, Lynch says, how do you organize, how do you organize all your Photoshop files that pile up with time? Do you save them on a different hard drive?
Yeah, I have a external hard drive that I dump all my files. In my computer, I only have the things that I'm working at the moment. And then when I finish, I save it to the external hard drive. Uh, for, like for work stuff, I have a folder for
Yeah.
Work, of course, but for my personal stuff, I have, uh, folders that are named, uh, like two thousand twenty-three, uh, like eleven, which is the month, and twenty-eight, for example. If I do that, my files will be always organized from like oldest to newest. So I have a, uh, like this month folders and then inside that I can have like the files itself.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not good at naming my files, so, which is not very nice because like if I want to cer- uh, search for this in my folders, sometimes I can be lost. Uh, what is the file that had the, the water bending? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Because sometimes I, I would, I, actually this file is called Moon Colony Water Bending, so I would know. But if I'm drawing for myself, I would just name it, uh, twenty-three, eleven, twenty-eight. So it's like today's date and that's it.
Yeah, that's, that, that's what I've done before and I thought, well, this is a really good system where you, you name it the date and then you realize about two months later, like, well, I have no idea what day I did this on. I just want to know. I just wanna know.
Yeah, I like to do that. Yeah, I like to do that to, to see the progress of things that I do and like what days I did things. But maybe you can do this for folders, but inside the folder you actually named the, the file. I don't know.
Yeah.
I have to come up with something that is, uh, easier because I always, when I'm saving files, I, I think, oh, this is obvious. But when I try to search for it, like I cannot find it.
I wonder, I wonder if you can add, I mean, this is going into questions that aren't really related to this stream. I, I wonder if you can add like tags onto files so that if you typed in, so you could name the file like today's date and then have a tag that is water bending. So when you, when you searched water bending, it came up even though it's not in the title. I mean, it's, it's for something that is not relevant to art at all, but you know, just thinking out loud.
Good question.
Yeah. Um. Casey said Eagle App, really useful. Eagle App is tagging better data. Oh, okay. Well, yeah, there's, there's loads of different ways you could do it. Cool. Well, I think, I think that's us, uh, done for today then.
Yes.
Um, thank you, uh, thank you, everybody for watching. It's been nice to, to chat with you. And I, I hope to see some amazing, uh, amazing. And I, I hope to see some amazing, uh, amazing water benders in the, in the Discord as well. And thank you, Leoni, for, for coming along today and much appreciate it. Um, even though I was concerned earlier, thought, thought we were gonna have to move it. Um.
It works.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We are, uh, we are back with you tomorrow. I believe.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Tomorrow we're going to do, uh, frame, uh, movie frames.
Yes, yeah.
Some illustrations.
Yeah, we're gonna be studying some, some movie frames and doing some of that. We've done a bit of it in the Discord voice chats before and it's a fun exercise, especially if you're fairly, I think if you're fairly new to art, it's a good one to do as well, so.
Yeah.
Um, come along to that, it'll be good fun at same time tomorrow. Um, but thanks again. Don't forget about our feedback form that I mentioned earlier. Uh, you can find that in the Discord too. But until then, stick around and I'll find someone for us to raid, but we will see you tomorrow. Bye, everybody.
Bye, bye.
Bye.